We're calling this meeting to order. This is the City Council Regular Meeting. It's in the Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street. It's Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, and it's 7:10 PM. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she would please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor of the Gawn.
President.
Bill Kueckie.
Here.
Louise Michael.
Present.
Danielle Trumbull.
Here.
Dave Harshberger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
And Mayor Celine.
Here. Sorry. We're standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So now we're on to approval of the minutes. And we have one set of minutes for this evening. It's the October 3rd, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes. And I'm wondering if the council has any additions or corrections, or if we just approve by affirmation.
Yep.
There we go. And now we're on to correspondence. And we have the Extra Mile Day proclamation. And I'm wondering whether, you know, whether there's someone here to receive it. Okay. So I will be reading it, and then we will make sure it gets to whoever needs to get to, get it. Whereas Morgantown, West Virginia is a community that acknowledges that special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Morgantown, West Virginia is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Morgantown, West Virginia is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of the community. And whereas Morgantown, West Virginia acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2023. Another, for I, Jenny Celine, the mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the first day of November, 2023, as Extra Mile Day. In the City of Morgantown, we encourage each individual in the community to take time on this day, not only to go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And I'd say many, many citizens in Morgantown exhibit these traits and work really hard on behalf of their fellow human beings. And so anyway, I'm proud to make this proclamation. So now we have two proclamations for first responders. I assume these might go to police and fire. So if you all want to come up, we can read this and bring, bring whoever you like with you. If we're doing it, we're doing it all the way.
Would you rather talk to the shorter ones?
I talk to people of all heights. That's just how the world is.
You don't want to look them in the eye.
Careful, chief, they outnumber you.
I don't know. Is that, huh? What was that?
Eh, maybe a little.
A little rib in there.
Maybe a little.
Okay. Okay. You can't, you can't hide that. So, on National First Responders Day, we honor the bravery of our nation's heroes who put their lives on the line for their fellow Americans each and every day, from law enforcement officers who keep our streets safe, and firefighters who rush into burning buildings, to relief workers who care for our families after natural disasters, EMTs, paramedics, and other public health workers who provide lifesaving emergency care at a moment's notice. When tragedies strike, these men and women are always there to help us, and we thank them for their extraordinary service to our community. And we ask each, and we ask more of our first responders today than ever before. Being a police officer not only means keeping our community safe, but also acting as a counselor and sociator. Being a firefighter means not only combating fires in homes and businesses, but also responding to vehicle wrecks and EMS calls, working around the clock to save lives. Yet, even when first responders are stretched thin, their courage and commitment to service never wavers. And whereas today and every day, America's first responders remain on alert and on call, always there for us when we need them. As we celebrate these patriots who have answered the call of duty, we honor the memory of the heroes we have lost. They are woven into the fabric of our national character, embodying the extraordinary selflessness, rare commitment to others, and remarkable bravery that has inspired us for generations. And whereas first responders are highly trained, specialized workers who contribute their excellent skills for the public good, they undergo a significant education, training, and personal sacrifice to achieve the expertise required to respond to all types of emergency situations. And whereas, let us renew our commitment to, as a community, to standing by them and their families, just as they stand by us, shaping a stronger, safer, and more resilient Morgantown. Therefore, I, Jenny Celine, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 28th, 2023, as National First Responders Day in the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, and call upon all of the people of this community to observe this day with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities to honor our brave first responders and to pay tribute to those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. So.
Thank you very much.
Pass that to you.
Thank you.
And pass that to you.
Thank you.
And appreciate all of your service.
Thank you.
And if either of you have something you would like to say.
Just thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have next on our agenda, Boards and Commissions. I believe we have an appointment today.
I would like to appoint Dylan Thomas to the Health and Wellness Commission.
Second.
Thank you. And we all agree, affirmation?
Yep.
All right. Now we're on to the public portion. So we have a sign-in sheet, and we'll go through the people who are on the sign-in sheet, but you do not have to be on the sign-in sheet to have your moment during the public portion. So when we're at the end of that, then we will ask if there's anyone else who's interested in speaking. So we'll start this. Danny Ludwig. Nice to see you.
It's good to see you. I'm Danny Ludwig. I live at 326 Broadway Avenue. I'm here to speak on the fact that our county is not hosting a cold weather shelter this year. I understand that no agencies are willing to host due to the lack of labor and funds. We cannot expect people to hold down a full-time job and work night shift at a shelter. It's not sustainable for anyone. In the year, in the United States, seven, about 700 people die from hypothermia every year. Camps are being cleared out, tents are being thrown away. How does anyone expect people to survive without even some sort of a shelter? If temperatures drop to anything like last year, our people will freeze to death. We need your help. I contacted the governor, asking for help and maybe some guidance. Our city's mission should echo the words that it speaks. I challenge our community to come together and find a space that we can utilize and people that can staff and volunteer to help run the facility. On our city webpage, there is a place where you can put volunteer opportunities. Please, I'm begging you to help our unsheltered folks. They are human too. Let, let's us refer to Scripture for just a moment. Proverbs 327 says, "It is God's job to place specific people in our lives that need help." It is also His job to give the resources to help those people. We just need to be faithful to act on those moments with what we, He has given us, and we can let Him take care of the rest. Our city's character is sculptured by not only its structure and the wisdom delivered by the founders of this great community, but by the compassion we extend to those in the shadows. May our actions mirror the enduring principles and transcend time and creed fostering a city where empathy and justice reign. I've worked with this population for about five years, and I've never had to like speak on not having a weather, a cold weather shelter. And I know if anything, the temperatures get like last year, people will, will freeze. I mean, we don't need that for our community. But thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trista Huff.
All right. My name is Trista Huff, and I live on 439 Baird Street. So I've lived downtown for over a year. In that short amount of time, I have seen the effects of homelessness and how much of a problem it truly is. These people are struggling immensely, and this will only get astronomically worse once the temperatures drop. It's absolutely necessary for there to be adequate funding to shelter these people from the elements this winter. Otherwise, they will likely die, which is unacceptable. Access to shelter is a basic human right, and to deny human beings that is barbaric. I just imagine if that was my friend or family member out there, completely exposed and vulnerable, and it sickens me. We have got to do better for our unhoused population. They are our most vulnerable, and instead of trying to pretend like they don't exist or don't matter, we should be treating them like fellow human beings. The problem of homelessness is not going to go away just because we turn a blind eye to it or treat them as less than human. It's only going to cause more suffering for the people who already have suffered so much and have so little. This is why adequate funding is so important, because it's truly a matter of life or death.
Amanda Goddard.
My name is Amanda Goddard. I live on 439 Baird Street, and I have been living there for about a year. Over the time living there, I have also come across many who are homeless. So I want to speak on the importance of our city to host a winter shelter for the members of our community who do not have a home. Even with the presence of shelters like the Bartlett House, I see these members of our community every day walk past my street and around downtown at night. I worry about their safety in the upcoming months with temperatures dropping. Over the time I have lived on Baird Street, as I go on walks, I'll also see signs from our police addressing those who live in tents, saying how everything will be cleared if they haven't left by a certain date. If we continue this approach throughout the winter that takes away what little they already have, including their tents, many, many homeless will have nothing to protect them from the elements. If we want to have a stronger, more resilient Morgantown, as you put it, we cannot have members of our community perish in the cold. I'm concerned that will actually happen. I would like to see as much funding put in to support a winter shelter as possible. I'm very worried for the livelihood of the homeless in our community. Thank you.
Jennifer Powell.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Powell. I live at 215 Monongahela Avenue. I also work with the houseless neighbors in our community, and I'm very concerned about not having a warming shelter as well. And I just really implore you to put all the funding into this that you can, and any support that you can as well. I also really feel like we need to do everything we can as a community to provide basic human rights, like somewhere to go to the bathroom. People want to complain all the time that they're, that people are defecating and urinating in the street. Well, they don't have a lot of choice. There's bathrooms that have been put into the city down by the river, and I really wish that they were open for these people to use. Or, and up at the farmer's market, I know it would take a lot to get them clean and to have them stocked, but maybe porta-potties. Something needs to happen, or that's going to continue to be a problem. Another problem is water access. There's a water spigot down by the river that was installed, but it's shut off. There were some of our folks that were drinking out of the cistern at the farmer's market until they saw people taking dead birds out of it. That's just not acceptable in our community, in my opinion. They've got to have somewhere where they can get fresh water. And so I really hope that we look to the least of our, and ours in our community, the people that are the least privileged, and try and do what we can for them. It's so important. They are our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Layman.
Hello, everybody. So my name's Kate, and I work at 341 Spruce Street. So I also wanted to address the issue with the, the lack of funding for the warming shelter this winter. I want to, I guess, go the route of asking that you guys give recovery a chance. And the reason that I say this is because, so I am the Director of Friendship Community and Recovery. You guys probably know who we are, because last year this time, we were Friendship House, and we operated at Walnut Street. The same time last year, some of the people, some of the clients that we served that were in active addiction and were experiencing homelessness, I am proud to say that they are now with us at the Friendship Community and Recovery, and they are in recovery, and they are housed. If it weren't for the warming shelter, they wouldn't have had that opportunity, because there is a possibility they would have, they would have died over the winter, because we had awful temperatures, you know, freezing. So I'm just asking that you guys give recovery a chance, you know, give people a chance to live until they can see recovery. I also want to note that I've heard that in Wheeling, they are, there's an ordinance about camps as well. They're supposed to get torn down in 24 hours. But over the winter, they have vowed to not do that until they have a warming shelter in place, because they know that at the very least, people can make their campsites as warm as possible. So I'm asking. So I'm asking that even if we can't afford a warming shelter, that we at least don't tear people's camps down so that they can try to provide for themselves and keep themselves alive over this winter. And that is all. Thank you.
Annie York, Cronin, York. In three seconds.
I'm Annie Cronin York. I'm the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, which means I have to live inside Morgantown good enough, right? I'm here tonight to implore whoever's watching and I'm thinking of few people present tonight, I might have the right crowd, to apply to be on the Human Rights Commission. We have had a very much turnover and retirements and people moved away and we are rather low on commissioners. There are supposed to be seven, there are three of us. I would like to fix that, but with quality candidates, people who have a demonstrated interest in human rights and are willing to do some work. It doesn't have to be 150 hours, a couple of weeks, but putting in some time and making a difference. I'm not interested in sitting there and talking about doing things and doing nothing. So I'm always doing stuff. Ask Heather Ibugger nonstop. So we have an interesting scope of things that we work with. City Morgantown is unique in that we have protections for sexual orientation and gender identity and veteran status. To the best of my knowledge, we have done nothing with veterans in recent history. Although speaking to John Beuh and the others today, I understand that the Human Resources Department has some sort of interactive group. So that is another thing I'd like to do is have the various committees and commissions come together where we overlap and maybe work together on some of these problems. So if anybody would please, please, please apply to be on the Human Rights Commission. That would be grand. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I can give her, but I'll give it to you too.
Okay, thank you. Tanner Ramsey. Tanner Ramsey? You, sir, apparently.
Hi, my name is Tanner Ramsey. And up until a little over a year ago, my address was 20 Scott Avenue. I was a resident at the Bartlett House and at that point in time, I'd seen so many people not have a place to stay because it would get so full. Now I'm the Program Coordinator of Friendship Community and Recovery and I'm in recovery myself and have been for a good while. And I also worked last year at the warming shelter. And just the amount of people that I've seen that place help, that would have likewise froze outside, really warms my heart and the thought of there not being one breaks my heart. So that's just, I just wanted to share that with you guys and thank you so much.
So now if there's anyone else who didn't happen to write their name down, they're still welcome to come and state your name and your address and have a few moments to speak. Is there anyone else who is interested in speaking? This is your moment. Yeah. Come on up.
Hi, I don't have a whole lot to say. My name's Ren Peterson, 742 Globe Avenue. In the last few months, I've become kind of very aware of the situation in town. And, and I see a lot of very vulnerable people. A lot of them are old and physically incapacitated and all that. And I'm sure that there's also a lot of substance abuse and all that. But I, I really do think that the city, to be proud of itself, can do something, just to provide something against the cold, a warm shelter. And I know that there are a lot of problems along with that in terms of how, for lack of a better word, you police it, you know, make sure that everyone is safe within that shelter. And I think that you'll probably have to have some paid employees overnight, one or two. But it's, to me, a minimal cost and I think that it is a very caring action and something that really should be done. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Appreciate you all taking the time to come and speak tonight and we're going to close the session unless there's anyone else who's wishing to speak. And now we're down to new business. First item is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the acceptance of grant funds, $250,000 under the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And this would go to our city manager.
A brief description, I'm sure several of the members of council have, may have more information, being affiliated with the boat park. But this particular resolution acknowledges the need for universally accessible and sensory rich play environments to meet the diverse needs of our, of our, of our community. It authorizes the application to land and water conservation funds in the amount of $250,000 with, in order to construct at Deckers Creek Trail and Valley Crossing, a bike skills pump track. Now, I'm not real familiar with, I mean, I've certainly seen the pictures and it looks pretty intricate to me and it looks like a skate park or a bike park, but, and it is and it's, it's highly accessible. What this would allow us to do is to enter into a contract to accept $250,000 from land and water and a commitment through Boat Park. We're, we're applying on behalf of Boat Park, a commitment that Boat Park will match that with, in an amount of $250,000.
So I didn't know if you had anything else that you wanted to say about that or?
Well, I was, do you want to motion before we?
Sure.
Move to approve? Okay, so.
That was a motion?
I was, yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Brian, seconded. I was confused when it said acceptance of grants.
I know.
Because it's an application for.
We got no money yet.
Yeah, I was like, oh my gosh, we got, oh no.
It authorizes us to apply for grants.
Yeah. I did ask the director, I said, "I'm not sure that most people on council would even know what a pump track is." So you all should have received the pictures of that today. I asked her to send those. That is part of the plan. We're looking at potentially doing some mountain biking trails through Whitmore Park and taking down the structure that is currently at Valley Crossing with the intention to put in this as a trail side amenity. It's really good for younger children, beginners. So we're excited. I hope that we actually accept the grant.
When we get the money.
Yeah. Hopefully can accept it. I, I got excited when I read and then like, wah, wah. This is an application. Yeah.
Very exciting, very exciting. It's a wonderful trail amenity to be able to potentially have.
Excuse me, I have some questions about that. I thought initially when this was conceived, we were looking at including that over at Marilla.
There is a larger skate park planned for Marilla when the pool is demolished.
And I thought that was to include the, the, what do they call it, pump track too?
Not, it's more of a traditional skate park. There may be a loop of some type, but it's more of a traditional skate park that's kind of like what's there now, a lot of ramps and things as opposed to.
I, um.
This is a smaller item and similar.
Well, I certainly support any kind of activities that are beneficial to the community. I, I do have some concerns, the location in terms of parking considerations, things that can be dealt with. But I am curious, as we get more into this with skate parks and bicycles and cross-country bicycling or mountain biking, what kind of, what kind of possibilities do we have for liabilities with these activities? Is this something that's considered?
Boat Park carries very good insurance. We already have a skate park and mountain biking trails and.
You're comfortable that this is something that's not beyond our means?
This is commonly done other places and especially along already existing trails. And so it's sort of the norm and I'm certain that insurance companies are familiar with it because it's part of the norm.
And we carry the insurance. My concern is, and, and I, again, I'm all for these kinds of activities, these amenities that we can offer to the community. I have no objection to that whatsoever. I, I am concerned that when we do these things, we do them with all the possibilities in mind and that we prepare as much as we can to do it appropriately. And that, I'm just simply raising these questions to see whether or not we've actually done our dual, our due diligence, simply that.
So some of the people that we have locally that are helping to work on these projects and that are interacting with these companies are some of the top people in the country. So they would be very familiar with making sure that there's the correct amount of space around them and that there's, that the design isn't inherently dangerous, that there's, that it's, that it's up to standard. I think that you get more problems when someone does something kind of off the cuff.
Vigilante trail building.
And, and.
That's what we call it.
And it's not, it's either old and falling apart, which I'm familiar with some locations in Morgantown, or is, you know, out in the woods somewhere and just kind of handmade and not, not.
Again, what I'm looking, what I'm looking for is just some sort of comfort level for the public, knowing that when we suggest these things, it's been well conceived and meant to be beneficial and not necessarily a burden for this community. So thank you for that.
Well, and just if I might add, when you're talking about parking, there is, in the plans, there's a small parking lot being added, but the larger skate park will be over in Marilla Park. This is meant to be a trail side amenity for those that are riding along the Deckers Creek Trail. You get off, go up and down a couple, that's flat and paved, right? So you get off, go up and down a couple of little hills and bumps and around a couple of turns and then you get back on the trail and.
Very good.
Exactly.
Are the planes that we saw public information?
They are not finalized.
Okay. I just think it'd be cool for people to see.
Aspirational?
Those were neat.
I, I messaged her today and was like, "I haven't even seen the finalized ones. Can you send those to me?" And she's like, "Do you think I should send them to council?" I was like, "Yeah, why don't you do that?"
Yeah, those need to see.
Why don't we, if they're not finalized, why don't we ask that as soon as possible, when they are finalized?
Yeah.
That they be forwarded to us and to the press so that it's, so that people know exactly what.
I can certainly ask Melissa tomorrow if, like, we can put those out. I think that it's not.
It's conceptual more?
Yeah, it's a conceptual.
It's not an actual.
It's just exciting. Looks cool.
Oh, very exciting. Yes. Any other, those are very legitimate concerns about safety. We just need to make sure that we're step by step working with reputable companies and making reputable designs.
Very good.
And there will be collisions and scrapes and that's sort of part of that, kind of activity, but we're hoping to minimize that. Do we have any, do we have any legal advice in that realm?
No, that was very sound. We'll look at everything and some things will happen, but that's why you have insurance. That's why all of Boat Park facilities have that risk of somebody getting hurt at the pool, somebody getting hurt along the trails. You've got to make sure, as the mayor said, it's done correctly and that we can fall back on saying this is up to industry standards, this is as safe as we could make it and hope for the best.
Thank you.
Like with playgrounds, there's always safety zones, pardon me.
I'm no lawyer.
Pardon?
Said I'm no lawyer, but I, I just like a cursory look at state code, there's like this section of code, nineteen, chapter 19, section 25, that indicates, "An owner of land owes no duty, no duty of care to keep the premises safe for entry or use by others for recreational or wildlife propagation purposes." The, like, I guess the liability would fall if someone is intentionally or unintentionally making something unreasonably safe is mostly what I'm reading into this. Again, not, not a lawyer, but that's kind of what I'm seeing here, which is probably a lot of what, how skateboards get built in this state, many other states. But just to kind of assuage that a little bit, I think.
Designed activities definitely like for, for skateboarders. They need a safe place to do their activity and if it's not there, then it'll be somewhere else that's.
Not designed for it.
Not designed for it. Then you have a lot more problems. We want people to go out and have fun and learn how to operate their bicycle safely by using pump tracks and other, other ways of getting their balance and learning how to, learning, honing their skills. So we've had motions, we've had discussion. Is there anyone else that wants to state anything else?
Call for the question.
All right.
Deputy Mayor Vugolom.
Yes.
Bill Kowecki.
Yes.
Louise Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Hartsbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we're to consideration of approval of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with J- Jekyll Somavilla at the Morgantown Municipal Airport.
I, I can comment on it, that there isn't much to comment on. Follows the standard form.
Okay. We just wanted to make sure that you all had checked it over.
Yes, Mayor. Both myself and Ryan.
Good.
Checked it over and I think that was circulated around. Yep.
Yeah, we got it mid afternoon.
It was something that they wanted to get in place at the airport.
Yeah, I believe that there's a start date or November 1st maybe. And it's just for a single office, about 190, 95 square feet.
So is there a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. Then are there any questions about this lease?
Is this a business or is it just somebody's office space or will people be coming to it?
My understanding is that it should just be a person's business or a person's office space. And that's why it was in the individual's name, not in an LLC or whatnot. And it looks like it's on the FBO side, am I right? Looks like it's on the FBO side on an empty office, not the largest, but yeah, my understanding is it's not for the public.
And this is standard rent rate that we've been charging for this space?
Yes. I think it came to $15 square foot.
I think it's a reasonable, reasonable price for a very good location, which other people might consider.
I just want to add that I'm not necessarily against this. I'm sure it's very boilerplate lease, but considering I did not get a copy of it until 2:30 today and did not have an opportunity to read all 18 pages of it, I will be voting no this time until I have such time to read it and I will reconsider on second reading. We must make sure, this seems to be a real problem with airport leases and most things that come from the airport. We do not get them until the last minute and I will not vote for something that I have not had time to read. I would like to ensure that we are getting things out with the packet on time, please.
Excellent point. Excellent point. Any other comments or questions?
Call for the question.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor of Ugonum?
Yes.
Bill Kowacki?
Yes.
Louise Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
And Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes six to one. And now we're to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things I just wanted to recognize. One is that the city has, continues to attempt to, um, create some various opportunities in the recruitment of law enforcement officers to our police department. One such attempt occurred several days ago, women in law enforcement activity was very successful. We had approximately thirty people there, twenty of which were there primarily to, to express interest in, in the whole process, really wanted to express, and I hope that, we've already seen some, some positive response from that, but we're hoping that some additional positive responses come from it. Really wanted to express appreciation to the three council members who attended and supported that. It was very helpful to have you there, and also to Emily Mozzarelli for working with a group of folks to put that together. We will continue as, as a city to, to provide efforts to, to encourage application, not just in law enforcement, but across the city by, by populations that really are underrepresented in, in our workforce. The other, I know that some of you have been very interested in the museum manager situation. We are very, I mean, I, I don't want to say that it's been offered, but it, it will be offered to, to an individual, and we're hoping that that individual can start soon and take the reins over on that. And finally, you've, I'm sure you've heard or read about the break-in at the, you know, the City Hall construction site. There was a break-in over the weekend. A thousand dollars' worth of tools were, were taken or so. But because of the, the surveillance cameras that were in place, we were able to identify the individual and promptly arrest the individual. So, we, our, our law enforcement did a great job on that, and I believe that that's just the beginning of positive things, positive responses and results of having, um, cameras that will allow us to identify and to create the evidence necessary to, to prosecute. So, that's all I have to, to update council on.
Thank you. Report from the city clerk. No report. From the city attorney.
No report for me.
Report from council members. I was wondering if the deputy mayor would like to start.
Sure. First, let me say thank you to Christine and Drew. And I feel awful, what is, I cannot think of Drew's intern's name. I just met him for the first time today. Drew Bailey's intern, do you know him? I can't remember. All right. Well, they came by, uh, they came by my classroom today and presented and did a fantastic job in terms of going over logo and branding, which, you know, he was a big part of with our city, and he was explaining it to the kids, and they came up with their own versions of different serials. And as it relates to Municipal Education Week, tomorrow we'll be going into the city courthouse.
Public Safety Building?
What is it? Public Safety Building. It's been a long day. Public Safety Building, and we're gonna be having our mock city council meeting with eleven of the students. They already came up with their own version of ordinances, one being that they would like to use city funds to build a parking garage for the high school kids, which I told them may have some pushback. They also had free food for everybody under the age of eighteen and that there would be a required math problem to have a specified amount guaranteed every day. I'd be a little expensive, but I'm sure your community will speak on it. And then a third one that we're working on as well. And that is tomorrow at ten AM, and this past week we hosted Bingo. I'm sorry that Assistant Secretary Heather did not win, so I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay.
I tried to give you a winning board, I just couldn't guarantee it. That was real successful at the high school, and I'm glad to hear everyone, although a little wet, enjoyed Hops on the Mon as well, so. And then lastly, friendly reminder that October thirty-first is when our city celebrates Halloween from six to eight. I saw people were still asking on social media, six to eight, and if you're in the first ward area, Madigan Avenue is shut down, so it is safe to those with strollers or walkers or wheelchairs or some that just have bad knees and can't get up the curb. They can stay flat and go house to house with all their trick-or-treating and their littles. And I will wrap up right there.
Nice.
Welcome back, though.
Thank you. I, very little to report, but span meeting next week, next Wednesday. It will be at Eaton Park. They'll start earlier because of the, the change in, I guess, the change in time. It's getting darker earlier, so since they're meeting outside, they want to start a little earlier. Also, too, I want to thank the city. The city's over there doing a tree planting in, off of, on Cedar Street below Maple Avenue. And that was delayed, but they're gonna be there Thursday morning at ten AM, and if there's anybody who would like to participate, they'd be more than welcome. And that's about it. I'm happy to be sitting back in the chair and hope to continue.
I just wanted to bring up a reminder that this Friday is a WVU homecoming parade, and it will be downtown. I believe it starts at six o'clock.
Yeah.
And that was the only thing I had today.
Good.
Aren't they shutting the road down at four-thirty?
Uh, they are. We meet with Morgantown PD at sixteen hundred hours, so that's what time is it. Sets down.
Me now.
The Woodburn Association of Neighbors will be meeting tomorrow at seven PM in the gymnasium of the Woodburn Community Complex, the former Woodburn Elementary School. We will have representatives of the organizations who are working on the Richwood Redevelopment Project there with their most up-to-date plans that many people will probably find interesting. If that's a project that you are at all interested in, have a stake in, are concerned about, please attend and have an explanation and an opportunity to answer questions. I would love to hear from people in the neighborhood and surrounding areas as they have begun their process. And myself being on the planning commission, we will be hearing and deciding some of their beginning steps at our November meeting, so I would personally like to hear from people. Please come.
Just a follow-up question, is there an agenda published?
For?
For this particular meeting? That we know what, it's being considered?
The planning commission?
No, the Woodburn.
Um, an agenda was sent out to the email list and things. Posted on social media and sent to the email list from the Woodburn Association.
Is it posted on our website as well?
I don't know. I'm not in charge of the neighborhood association. You'll have to ask.
Very good. Thank you.
The city has copied when those emails go out, so I haven't checked to see if it's on there.
I'll find it on Facebook.
Okay. I feel like there were other things, oh, there's definitely other things. I was a fan of both of our proclamations earlier this evening, the extra mile and our first responder appreciation. I hope that we will all read both of those thoroughly and take the words to heart because I think we have a little work to do on those areas. To speak about other things that were brought up earlier in the meeting, the warming shelter. I have been meeting on this since April, since about thirty days after last year's shelter closed. I appreciate everyone who came and spoke about it and people who are passionate about it, and I just want to say that so far there is money set aside by the city and a little by the county, and I'm not even sure that finding additional money for it would necessarily be the problem. The, the issue that we're running into is there is no organization that is willing to, um, host it or run it. I have been meeting with the Built for Zero campaign through the Coalition and homelessness. I've been doing that as long as that's been a thing, so definitely since April. Every, I've attended every single meeting. H-three advisory council with all of our tenants and additional warming shelter meetings that we started in April, almost monthly. Any stakeholder that we could think of was invited. We, we reached out to churches, we reached out to social services, we reached out to other governmental agencies, we've reached out. We have money set aside. If there is someone willing to help come up with a plan or know of space, please reach out to us. We at Hazel's House of Hope, Morgantown Community Resources, are committed to having the day room open from morning until the Salvation Army dinner service. We are also working with the Bartlett House to expand their capacity for the winter, for their triage or emergency shelter. They've committed to, um, go, right now they have a twenty-bed, twenty-eight bed shelter. They have committed to going to at least forty. We're trying to see if there's any other opportunities within the building, within their space, to, to go higher than that. If anyone has any kind of plan and funding is the issue, please come to us because we, we certainly, I have put a lot of my own personal time into this. We, we certainly do not want to see anyone in the elements. We're, we're working with everyone we can think of. I heard earlier today, maybe a church might be stepping up. We will look into that and see, see what happens, but that's the first I've heard of it. So we will, we will definitely, I'll ask Councilor Butcher, and we'll, we'll look into that more. I would like to, it is time for another Hazel's House of Hope update. They put a nice one together for me to give to council. The Narcan vending machine at the Hope Hill Sobering Center still appears to be more popular than the facility itself. People come there for Narcan more than the services. Salvation Army served, this is all for the month of September. Salvation Army served over twenty-five hundred meals, over eighty-five per day, and their partnership with the city, the Food Box Program, they gave out a hundred and seventeen food boxes that Saturday in September. And in addition to the boxes that we've partnered with the Salvation Army on, Robin was also able to work with the Mountaineer Food Bank, and they gave away a lot of produce that day. I was up there, there were tons and tons of stuff, so it's good to give people nourishing food, not just something that'll fill you up. Bartlett House in September served fifty-seven unique individuals, and one hundred percent of those have case management, um, housing plans or have already been moved into housing. They're still moving around ten people a month into more permanent housing, I think. Wellspring serve, it's a mental health facility, served a hundred and thirty-one clients. The day room that we've been discussing is open for showers and laundry services. Again, um, clients of other social services are able to sign up. We have a Google Doc, so it's live. You can sign up and get there. Specifically, Christian Help and Health Right have been signing folks up for showers, but we also take walk-ins as available. If no one's signed up and someone's hanging out, they're, they're more than welcome. They've done, in September, they did twenty women's showers, fifty men's showers, and a hundred and thirty loads of laundry, so. People are finding it, and the hours should be expanding anytime now. I have personally, in the last two weeks, given a tour of H-three to the WVU Fentanyl Task Force, as well as last night, I gave a tour to about twenty-five students, twenty-five master's students in the WVU School of Public Health. So, we are really trying to get WVU involved. The Center for Community Engagement has a lot of volunteers coming to the facility. The WVU student athletes are actually holding a donation drive right now for H-three, and one student athlete is actually interning at Lauren's Wish. Lauren's Wish is about to celebrate their one-year anniversary. So, between October twenty-fifth of last year and October ninth of this year, they served three hundred and two clients with an average stay of just over eight days with an eighty-seven percent placement rate. They were, eighty-seven percent of those went on to a longer-term rehab facility of some type, whether that's sober living or inpatient treatment. Just a couple of, they gave me eleven pages of information and statistics from them. I'm not going to go through everything, but a couple of statistics that stuck out to me. Their clientele have been between the age of nineteen and seventy-four. It's, it's a much younger clientele. I've, I've been there a couple of times in the last two weeks. It's, it's much younger than you would want to, to think that it would be. Most people have a college, or a, a GED, high school diploma or higher. They, they are, um, it's not necessarily the, the demographics that you're thinking. Two hundred and two of those three hundred and two people had said that they had overdosed before with an average overdose, over five overdoses per person, and they're now in treatment. So, that's, as we're talking about celebrating recovery and rehabilitation, that's, that's amazing statistics to me. And one that I thought was just, well, over a hundred and thirty of those three hundred and two clients had, um, reported experiencing some type of abuse, physical, sexual, mental abuse. And a hundred and eighty-eight of those clients reported having children, four hundred and fifty-eight children between the hundred and eighty-eight, so this is really affecting families, and that's, that's where we get into a lot of, a lot of the issues that we get into. I'm happy to forward the rest of that report along to council. There's, like I said, eleven pages. There's a lot of information in there, but they wanted me to share with everyone some of their, um, some of their better statistics. They're doing great work there. I, I was there last night. That only went up through October ninth, so that's, you know, almost, or that's more than a week old now. I was there last night, and they had more than twenty people staying there yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great update. Thank you. What a, what a wonderful resource for the community up there. That's, that's awesome. I have a couple of rail trail updates. There's going to be some new amenities put in down by the amphitheater before the calendar year ends, and that's gonna consist of some totem pole wayfinding signs. There'll be at least a half dozen that will be between sort of the kayak rental facility and the Deckers Creek interchange with the Mon River Trail, and so helping to direct people into other services and amenities in the downtown Wharf area. And the lighting that will go under the bridge right there as Deckers Creek comes into the Mon River And the lighting that will go under the bridge right there as Deckers Creek comes into the Mon River Trail will be operational, I am told, before the end of the year. So there'll be lighting there. And the rail trail is still, there are still riders doing the Century Ride, which includes covering every aspect of the rail trail for a hundred-mile ride that are raising funds for maintenance of the rail trail. And on the Mon River Rail Conservancy website, you can still sponsor riders for, for pledges. So that is all I have there.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Dave. Last week, I got to attend the Conference for Philanthropy West Virginia in Ogilvy Resort at Wheeling to talk about the warming shelter from last year, as well as the hotel program. I was there with Jeanette Lewis from the United Way, Becky Rodd, Patty Showers Ryan from YCF, and Katie Heinemann Klug from Catholic Charities. Just to talk about how the warming shelter interacted with the hotel program, how it was a community project that was stood up by volunteers. It was a good conversation with a lot of philanthropic funders, so that's basically who was there. And it was basically advocacy for how community projects should be funded by philanthropy. Just as, I guess, an update for the hotel program. We have limited funding for hotels right now, little less than ten thousand dollars. And we have two sets of people staying in hotels right now over the next couple of days. They will be placed in housing, so it, you know, after that, we won't have anybody. But I feel like there's a lot of people in this room that I've worked with on that before and wanted to let you know that that resource is there. I'll do what I can to help. And I just want to say that a warming shelter, and I think after this summer, probably cooling shelters as well are vital community infrastructure. It saves lives just like a fire hydrant or anything else that we consider public safety and for the public good. And I think it's, as we progress as a society, that we should be moving towards standing up these kind of facilities if it is something that's not going to stand up all by itself through community volunteers. Finally, I wanted to mark the passing of Darren Lester. He died suddenly just a few days ago. I got to see him in the hospital just before he died. And if you didn't meet Darren, Darren was a great guy. He got COVID while he was in prison at Mount Olive. Once he exited, and that's relevant because he, he got very sick with COVID when he was in prison. And when he exited prison, he did everything he could to help people re-enter from incarceration. I met Darren last year and he was just an incredible guy and a good friend. And he'll be missed a lot in this community. And that will conclude my report, thank you.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
I should have asked a question when you were on topic.
That's okay.
The hotel program, is it my understanding that that has to be spent by the end of December?
No, that's the previous funds and that's already been, that was a few months ago. But yes, that was.
That's good to hear, not a lot of money there, but I thought it had to be by December.
No, it's the, the old ones, but that's already spent.
So appreciate everyone's work on having a cold weather shelter. Because people started so early last year on working on this problem. I think we all naively thought that it would be more solved by now. I think that part of the problem was because we had so many people that needed shelter. To take it on in the same way this year. And it could be that we just need to have more decentralized housing, which is much harder to organize and monitor because you need people, as we were talking about, often paid people to stay overnight and make sure that everyone is safe and the shelter is organized. And also, as people have said, we definitely have funding that's allocated and the possibility of more funding. It's more of a facilities and organizational, having people to organize a shelter. And I really appreciate all of the work that everyone here who has worked on this problem has worked on. I have not worked on it as much as I possibly could have. So I've been relying on others who have been working really hard on this issue. So as we are imminently in the cold months and as we come up with more solutions, be it for eighteen more beds or twenty more beds or a church that's willing to take on some, I think that part of the trick here is not to overwhelm any one organization or, or facility so that we can count on having whatever we come up with into the future. Because I think it's when organizations and structures just get overrun that they then haven't had a good enough experience to have it again the next year. So everyone who can contribute, including with the hotel program or any other program that's viable and safe. I just encourage people to talk and work together and encourage others to keep working on this issue because it's really important. Wanted to mention, last week, we had back-to-back days, both the Women in Policing Program that was brought up earlier, that was sponsored through the police department, that was very well done and definitely got people thinking who, who might want to have a career in policing. And also then, at the airport, there was a meeting, meeting of Women in Aviation, which was a meeting of people in this part of the state who all work in aviation. And they have had other programs to encourage girls and young women to consider a career in aviation. But it's great to see people sort of trying on their careers and thinking about how they're going to contribute to the betterment of society and the betterment, you know, and how to help in their community and be productive. And I really appreciated that. Whatever we can do to promote the Halloween hours, like on our website or so that people do know that it's six to eight in Morgantown and go out at that time. It used to be it was a much more abbreviated, like one hour type of thing. And so we should make sure that kids get to enjoy the six to eight, the two-hour time period that we have. Appreciate everyone mentioning all of the different activities that are going on. And I'm amazed, like with the balloon festival this weekend, how happy it makes people to just see a balloon go over, go over their head, enjoy in their neighborhood, having their cup of coffee and just seeing a balloon show. And even though they couldn't fly some of the other days, it looked like the flying that happened both in the morning and afternoon on Friday, the thirteenth, was very satisfying for people. So I, I just appreciate that. And also the event that happened on Friday evening that I couldn't attend because I had a family event to attend, a concert that my husband was singing in. But there was a RDBIC event that I was just dying to go to that was celebrating their fifty years of existence, which is quite a, quite a milestone. So anyway, appreciate everyone and I'm done with my comments and it's time to go into executive session.
Pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Section six dash nine A dash four two nine, to discuss acquisition or other development of real estate that we move, oh, in the fifth ward, that we move into executive session.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, yes? All right, here we go. Thank you all for coming to speak today. That was great.